Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your attendance here at today's city commission meeting. Our last and second meeting of the month of June. Appreciate you being here. We're going to start with a roll call with Commissioner District One.
Deandre Knoxon, District One.
Aboue, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum established. Five of the seven Commission members present. We are very happy today to have with us for the invocation Pastor Matthew Brockman of Peace Lutheran Church. And Pastor Brockman, after the pledges led by Commissioner Knoxon, if you will remain there and you can share any announcements you have for the community with the city. Let's stand.
Let us pray. Lord of heaven and earth, we ask for you to be with and bless this meeting this evening. Let the discussion and the decisions be pleasing in your sight. We give you special thanks for the many years of dedicated service that we are celebrating tonight, ten, fifteen, twenty, even thirty years of service to their fellow citizens in Texas City. And we give you thanks for these individuals today. And we ask you would bless their continued service. We also give thanks for all of the, all of the workers of the city. And we ask for your special blessing upon those in emergency management as storm season is upon us. And we ask for your special protection to watch over us and protect us from any storms. And as the summer heat is upon us, we ask you would be with all of those employees who are out in the heat and that you would especially be with all citizens and protect them from the heat and give them cooling stations. As we celebrate Juneteenth tomorrow, we give thanks for that our nation ended a great evil and sinful practice tolerated for way too long. As we prepare to celebrate Independence Day, we give you thanks for the freedom and right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness that you grant to every single citizen. And that is the duty of government and the people to protect. We also then pray for peace within Texas City as well. And as there has been some disagreements and some disruptions, we ask that you would mend these situations and that you would be with Mayor Johnson, the city commissioners, and all of our citizens, that they would work together to reconcile, that they would work together to better serve our community. And to you, oh Lord, we put our trust. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
That's our pledge.
On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor Brockman, thank you for that wonderful prayer. If you have any announcements for the community, please feel free to share them with us at this time.
Don't have any special announcements, but thank you for the opportunity you provide to all the ministers within the city to open prayer for y'all each, each time you meet. And God's blessings to everybody's summer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we are up to proclamations and presentations. We do have a few service awards to give to the people who have hit significant milestones in their career with the city of Texas City. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Adam Hunt of Moore Public Library. It's Mr. Hunt here. Mr. Adam Hunt has been with Moore Public Library for ten years. We're thankful for him. Russell McEacham, McEachern. Russell has been with our rainwater pump station for ten years. Ms. Chastity Gurka in administration has been with us for fifteen years. Mr. Ronnie Avan, Mr. Ronnie Avan has been with the wastewater treatment plant for twenty years. Mr. Edwin Munoz, Mr. Edwin Munoz has been with our public works department for thirty years. And Mr. Landis Cravens, our Chief of Police, come on up here, Chief Cravens, has been with us for thirty years. Chief, you've been with us for thirty years. If you want to have some words, you can, you can say anything you'd like to the public.
Yeah, just a, a few things. My twin brother is here. Landry, if you will stand up a second. Landry has been with Galveston County Drainage District Number Two for thirty-one years.
Oh, huh.
So he services Texas City and Lamarck. And so we come from a family of service. I've been blessed for all my service has been from the city that I was born, I was raised, and where I raised my, my family. And, and I've been honored to serve the citizens of Texas City. And just overwhelming. It doesn't seem like thirty years because I've been here. I've never left home. So thank, thank you.
Also at this time, proclamation, we are here to proclaim the month of June and actually June nineteenth tomorrow as Juneteenth. The holiday acknowledges that with the proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth is also known as Freedom Day, commemorates June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to announce the end of slavery, more than two years after the emancipation proclamation had been issued. And whereas Juneteenth stands as a powerful reminder of resilience, courage, and strength of our African-Americans and their enduring contributions to culture, history, and progress of our nation. And whereas the observance of Juneteenth has grown to be a celebration of African-American freedom, family, heritage, community, marked by education, reflection, and joy. And whereas the city of Texas City joins communities across the country in honoring the legacy of those who endured the injustices of slavery and celebrates the achievements and ongoing contributions of Black Americans. And whereas we recognize and commend the efforts of community leaders, churches, organizations, citizens, especially those who work tirelessly to organize Juneteenth events that foster unity, educate our youth, and celebrate the power of freedom. Now therefore I, the Mayor of the city of Texas City, and on behalf of the city commission do hereby proclaim tomorrow, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Juneteenth holiday. And we encourage all citizens to honor this important milestone in American history through education, celebration, and continued efforts to promote justice and equality for all. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Texas City to be affixed on this eighteenth day, day of June, two thousand twenty-five. This is signed by Mayor Dedrick Johnson and attested by our City Secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. I'm going to present this to Mr. Mike Richardson of our Recreation and Tourism Department. Our Recreation and Tourism Department has led this whole county in planning Juneteenth activities over the past eighteen years. Come on up, Mr. Mike Richardson.[512.33][512.33](APPLAUSE). Mike is our, Mike is our Recreation Superintendent, and we just wrapped up a week of Juneteenth activities in Texas City. Thank you, Mike. We had a golf tournament yesterday. About how many teams we had in that tournament?
Uh, I want to say twenty-six.
About twenty-six teams or so. So it was pretty, pretty success, pretty successful. We had a golf tournament, gospel fest, poetry slam, and all other types of events, and a concert in the park. We had to move it indoors, but it was great. We moved it to the Doyle Center, and people who came out had a great time. So thank you, Mike. We're up to reports. We have two reports that we're going to hear from today. One of the reports is from our municipal court on collections. We will hear from our court administrator, Ms. Tammy Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, citizens and staff. It's never want to be the first one to have to run this thing in a meeting. Tonight I'm going to give you just some highlights of some of the activity that's taken place in municipal court over the last year. To start off, I wanted to share with you our vision statement. Our vision at municipal court is to be a national model for excellence and innovation in municipal court administration. We are leading with proven court management strategies to enhance our commitment to justice, fairness, and due process. We will strive to foster a culture of continuous improvement, collaboration, transparency, and accountability. To achieve that, our mission is to provide equitable, efficient, and accessible justice to those that we serve while upholding the highest standard of professionalism, integrity, and ethical conduct to promote public trust, confidence, and the dignity of all. This is just a quick snapshot of our organizational chart. The, the blue indicates the direct reports from Marshall's office as well as court staff. And the green boxes represent the independent judiciary. I always like to include this slide because sometimes people are not aware of the types of cases that we handle in municipal court. We handle all class C misdemeanors, and that can include any city ordinances, Texas statutes. Also includes federal commercial motor vehicle offenses. And administrative cases, for instance, substandard structures, junk vehicles, high grass weeds, rubbish. We also handle expunions and modification of magistrate's orders, particularly emergency So this is just a quick glance, like I said, of some of our statistics for two thousand twenty-four. In two thousand twenty-four, and this is January through December stats, we handled four hundred and four code enforcement violations, fifty-eight cases that were filed by Neighborhood Improvement Services, a hundred and ten federal commercial motor vehicle cases, a thousand seventy-five state law violations, and ten thousand seven hundred and ten traffic violations. That does include parking offenses. This is again just a comparison of our cases filed versus our cases cleared and a projection for year-to-date, two thousand twenty-five. In two thousand nineteen, we had twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eleven cases filed. We closed twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four of those cases. Twenty twenty-four, twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-seven, closed thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-nine. Twenty-five, we are, so far we're sitting at six thousand five hundred and ninety-five cases, and we've closed six thousand of those cases. We are projected to have a filing of fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight. It's always our goal to close more cases than are filed. We don't want to grow our case inventory. So we are going to obviously need to ramp up some of our efforts this year to make sure we're making up that, making up that difference. The next screen here isn't indicative of the warrants that were issued and cleared. So twenty nineteen, we had five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five warrants filed and cleared five thousand nine hundred and sixty-three. Same thing applies here. We want to make sure we're clearing more warrants than we're issuing. And these warrants could be issued at the order of the judge or because of a request that comes to us from one of our filing agencies, mostly from the police department. Two thousand twenty-four filings were four thousand two hundred and thirty-three issued. We cleared four thousand six hundred and seventy-eight. And so far this year, we've done two thousand two hundred and fifty-one warrants, and we've cleared two thousand four hundred and sixty-three. Again, that's, that's what the kind of trends we want to see. We want to see that we're clearing more than we're taking in. So for collections by year, two thousand nineteen, total collections were four point two million. The city retained two point six million of that. One point four million was sent to the state in our third-party vendors, which include OmniBase system where we hold driver's license for those who are out of compliance, also from the efforts of our Limebarger, Goggin Blair, and Sampson, our collection agency. So between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-four, we did do some adjustments in our, in our fines. So in two thousand nineteen, the city was only retaining, we were only retaining sixty-two percent of our fines. So we looked at other comparisons around the state to make sure that we were in compliance. We did raise some fines. And in two thousand twenty-four, we increased that retention amount to seventy-six percent. So although we are, our overall total was much less at two point eight percent, or two point eight million, we, we retained more of that by keeping two point one million of that. So, and then this year, we are on track to do, to do exactly the same, retaining seventy-five percent, nineteen percent going to the state, and six percent going to our third-party vendors, which is more in line with national standards. A few of our goals for this year are, that we have completed a couple. We have completed the youth diversion program. So juveniles and youths that are charged with state law violations now go through a diversion process where their case is held, they're given the opportunity to do community service or some other means of satisfying a temporary order for that. And if they're successful, that doesn't go on their record, it's never a filing in the court, it doesn't mess up their opportunity to attend the college of their choice, join the military, or any other endeavors, anything that they want to do in the future. So we're really excited about that. That diversion program is available to anyone who would like to receive a copy of it. You can just swing by our office and we'd be happy to share it with you. We also created a comprehension, comprehensive written standard operating procedures throughout our organization, and that was completed this last year. Moving forward, we hope to continue to work by outlining a community court plan and identifying our stakeholders, collaborate, and Motorola Citation Import, we're continuing to work with our TCPC to create an import process so they can issue citations from their in-car laptops and make that an electronic seamless process for both of us. We are looking at creating videos of our SOPs that we wrote last year to enhance the development and cross-training of court staff. So a new employee or a cross-training employee can come in, pull up a video of the process, follow along the written guide, and complete that process by using those tools. And hopefully that will help to unify and everybody's training the exact same process the same way. We're also hoping to cultivate some relationships with our mental health resources, our nutrition support, and veteran services providers to reduce resitivism in our court. Unfortunately, we do see a lot of the same, the same people come in over and over, and and a lot of times it's because they need help from one of these resources. So we are working on building those relationships so that we can refer them to the proper place. And hopefully, they don't ever have to see us again. That is all I have for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Tammy?
I have a question, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Our municipal courts is doing a wonderful job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We do have difficulties making our general public aware when they report to the commissioners that there's a dilapidated vehicle that's been sitting here for two months, or there's a substandard structure, or there's high grass here and there, that these items have to be processed through the municipal court when we're talking about property and such. So it's a process, and, and we have to continue to explain that over and over again, but you guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. And it's very important to us that we protect the rights of both of the individuals involved in that process. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Jamie.
Any other questions? Thank you.[1197.64][1197.64](APPLAUSE). As always, we have reports every commission meeting, and we, we will continue with that from our departments so that the citizens can know what we're, we're doing. And right now, we're up to Public Works to give a report on the wastewater and sewer system. Mr. Jack Harrelson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm just going to spout out some statistics and some, some facts, just kind of let you know what we've got going on in our wastewater system. Our wastewater treatment plant, which is located on Bay Street Extension just south of our municipal shooting range, it's the Wallace Knox Wastewater Treatment Plant. We're permitted for twelve point four million, million gallons per day is what the MGD stands for. That's how much we can process, that's what we're permitted for. We're currently running about seven point six, that's what we're averaging, million gallons a day, but we permit it up to twelve point four. We have fifty-one lift stations, that includes two major stations, Stations Ten and Thirty. Ten is located right off of the Loop, right next to the Biosphere. Thirty is Sixth Street, Twenty-Fifth Avenue, just south of the entrance to North Village. Those are the two main ones. We got a problem with one of those, we make things happen right away. But we have fifty-one lift stations. We have over two hundred and forty-seven hundred miles of gravity sewer system. If you think about it, we're running from Log Omar all the way to the farthest east end of town. So that's quite a bit. And we have forty-four point eight one miles of force mains with over forty-two hundred manholes. Like I had mentioned before, we have, we treat currently, we're averaging seven point six million gallons per day. I didn't know this, Corbin and I was talking about it, just a heavy rain year or a dry year can affect that average by upwards of one to two million gallons a day can affect our average. So we're sitting right where we need to. One of the things, there's a seventy-five ninety rule that I learned about. If we are approaching our maximum by seventy-five percent, since we hit seventy-five percent, we need to go into some engineering to talk about expansion of the plant. We're not there yet, but at ninety percent, you have to be in construction making those improvements. We have, at the wastewater treatment plant, of course, we, we discharge after all the treatment into Moses Lake, and we have daily inspections and, and tests that we do on all of our discharge stuff and all through the lines. We have weekly testing for certain things, all kinds of monitoring, sludge testing, that's what we have to, after everything's cleaned out, that we have to landfill. We've got, there's just a lot of stuff going on, and we only have, I think, about four people that typically mans the, the plant. Some big projects that we've got going on or that we've just finished up, we replaced the emergency generators at Station Ten and Thirty. Those two stations are a recurring theme. We found out that we can leave them down for maybe eight hours until we have a problem, until Corbin and I start getting on the phone and telling people, stop flushing their toilet. So we figured that one out. So we replaced those generators to make sure we have zero issues with that. We've also done some, some other lift station. We typically do about two a year, Mayor, to complete rehabs. Sewer gases will destroy equipment, destroy, they'll eat metal, they, it eats concrete. So we have to, to stay on top of it. And, you know, that's where the sewer, that sewer part of your water bill, that's what keeps us going. That's why our citizens are very minimal any kind of service issues with our wastewater department. Another big one, once again, this was Station Thirty. About a year ago, we had a leak that, that popped up into one of our force main pipes. We had to get that replaced. At the time, we had to just put a temporary repair on it. We just recently just changed out the, the entire big common header there. And that kind of coincided with, with, with this work, where we put in isolation valves. The two main force mains that come into our wastewater treatment plant, before this project was done, any, if we had any problem and we had to turn force mains off, all of the sewer from the plant potentially could come back on you. So we had to have a way to kind of isolate it off so that we could do, do work if things popped up. So that was a big project for us. It was incredibly stressful because there's no Plan B. It either works or we got issues, and it, and it, and it worked out. We've got a, a good team on our wastewater side. Starts with Corbin. Calvin Brimmer is the wastewater treatment plant operator, and Wayne Solomon, if, if you don't know Wayne, he's, he's great, and I think Corbin would echo that. Some additional projects that we've got going on, we've got Phase Twenty-Three, Phase Twenty-Four. Those projects, it's about a million and a half worth of rehab that we do every year to our wastewater system. I had mentioned before how much the groundwater, rainwater, can affect our daily input into our plant. This is minimizing that. That's why it's so important that we're replacing that. It's not so much as rain falling directly into the basins at this wastewater treatment plant, it's ponding water in people's backyards that's, that's seeping into old piping. So these projects that we do every year are incredibly crucial to the, the condition of our wastewater system as a whole. And then the belt press reconditioning, that's just some work that we've got going on at the plant itself. Looks like that's all I got, Mayor. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but...
That's fine.
I found out not many, there's not as many people interested in this as, as Corbin and I are, so...[1608.37][1608.37](LAUGHING).
They're very interested when it's not working. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Jack Harrelson?
I just, I have a comment. You know, we all just take for granted, we flush the toilet, you know, and expect everything to work. So thank you, Jack, and Corbin, and all of y'all that work so hard to, to keep us up to snuff what needs to be done. I know how hard y'all work. Thank you very much.
We have a great team. Corbin's got some, some good, long-term employees that have really take a lot of pride. One of them was on this, Ronnie Avan is one of the, the lead operator out at the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.[1646.14][1646.14](APPLAUSE). All right. At this time, we're up to the public comments portion of our agenda. There have been no one who has submitted a request to address the commission, so we will pass that and go on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items, Commissioners, you have before you Items Seven A through Seven C for your consideration. If there are any of these that you would like pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this time.
I'd like to pull Item C, please.
Yes, ma'am. Items, Item C. Any others? If not, what's your approval?
Motion to approve Items Seven A and Seven B.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve Items Seven A and B, and seconded by Commissioner Knoxon. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will discuss Item Seven C, consider and take action on Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-five dash zero six four, authorizing the approval of a contingency fee contract for collection services for the collection of delinquent taxes, court fines, and fees with Limebarger, Goggin Blair, and Sampson, LLP. We'll hear from our Management Services Department, Ms. Tammy Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for pulling this out, Ms. Clark. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this. This item would authorize the approval and continuation of our relationship with Limebarger for the collections of delinquent taxes as well as court fines and fees. It's customary for municipal governments to contract with a professional firm to collect delinquent ad valorem taxes owed to the city, and also contract with them for collections of delinquent court fines and fees. Limebarger, which offices here in Texas City, has provided exemplary service to the city for the past twenty-one years, and they are recognized as a leader in their industry. The fees for delinquent fine collection is fifteen percent of the tax collected and twenty percent of any attorney fees awarded in a delinquent tax suit on behalf of the city. The fee and collection of delinquent court fines and fees is thirty percent of the fines and fees collected. The terms of this proposed, proposed agreement are for five years, and that period will The terms of this proposed agreement are for five years, and that period would be ending June 17 of 2030. Separate legal notice of this action was duly posted in accordance with Texas Government Code 2254.1036. Additionally, the resolution contains certain findings required by state statute. And finally, the Texas Economics Commission Form 1295 was submitted by the recommended firm as required. Therefore, staff recommends the city commission authorizes the mayor to enter into a contingency fee contract for collection services with Linebarger, Goggin, Blair, and Sampson, LLC. I know Mr. Chevalier and his team are here, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have for us.
Thank you, Tammy.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any additional questions on that item?
I was just going to ask, I mean, Mark, if you've got a, to me, it's amazing how much money y'all collect for the city. And I know that, but I'd like for you to maybe say that and let everyone else know that as well.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, staff, friends, neighbors. Thank you. My name is Mark Chevalier. I'm the managing partner of the local office of Linebarger, Goggin, Blair, and Sampson. We, my team here tonight, part of our team, actually, my local partner Emily Watkins, who manages our litigation docket, and our client liaison, Brandy Stacy and Karen Vanderson, are here. We're happy to be here to answer any questions. I did want to highlight our success for the city of Texas City, which we're very proud of. I ran numbers, updated numbers this morning, pulled the data from the county tax office information system where your data resides. We have a cumulative collection rate from 2005 to 2023 of 99.81%. We're very proud of those numbers. Our municipal court collections are outstanding as well. They're some of the highest we have of any client in the Gulf Coast. Ms. Odom and her staff are a joy to work with. So we're very pleased. We're honored. I will tell you, so Chief, I too am a lifelong Texas Cityan, lived here my whole life, raised our family here. So as our old friend Ron Blackmire would call me, Mark, you're a lifer. So it is truly an honor to represent the city, my hometown, and we appreciate the opportunity. We will discharge our duties with all due professionalism, as you would expect, and will answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor, I didn't have any questions, but I did want to thank Mr. Chevalier and his team. Not only are they bringing in, you know, a good amount of money for the city, but providing the people with opportunities to make payment plans. You know, people fall on hard times and, or they're taking over a deceased member's property and, you know, unexpected finances. So just appreciate you guys having that opportunity for them to make those payments and work with those people. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. That is our philosophy. We spend all day, every day, talking with folks who owe delinquent taxes, our other offices, with folks who owe municipal court fee and fines. These are real people with real problems, and we have parameters that we have to work within in the law. But we treat people the way we'd want to be treated if we were in the same or similar circumstances. And as you can see, that produces the results that you expect and the citizens deserve.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-064.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve Resolution 2025-064, seconded, motion made by Commissioner Clark, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Congratulations to you and Linebarger. We're now down to regular items 8A. 8A says, "Consider and take action on Resolution Number 2025-065, awarding ITB Number 2025-482. Lift station 10 and 30, discharge piping improvements project." We'll hear from Mr. Harrelson again on Public Works.
Yes, sir, Mayor. It was a perfect timing that the speech that I gave earlier, it falls right in line. Here, we're back on Station 10 and 30. And this is the discharge piping that we're going to replace. You know, currently, it is a carbon steel pipe where it's ductile iron, excuse me, ductile iron pipe. We replaced it 12 years ago, and it's already in need of replacement. Once again, these are vital to the wastewater system, and we don't want to wait till it's a problem, so we're replacing it right now. We're going to use stainless steel this time. It's a little more expensive, but it's, we're supposed to get twice the life for not twice the price. So I think that was an easy decision. This was a budgeted capital project with the funds coming from our enterprise fund. So we recommend awarding the contract to Gillian Smith Construction in the amount of $373,000. Now I'll answer any questions if you may have.
Thank you, Jack.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve.
Second it?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jack. Item 8B, "Will Consider and Take Action on the First Reading of Ordinance 2025-12, Amending the Code of Ordinance for the City of Texas City, Title IX, entitled General Regulations, Chapter 94, Health and Sanitation, by prohibiting the placement of donation bins or receptacles for clothing or other items on public or private property." We'll hear from our fire marshal or some representative from the fire department. Chief, our fire chief. All right.
So basically, oh, good afternoon, good evening, everyone, Commissioners, Mayor, citizens, staff. Basically, this initiative, we've received a lot of complaints about the donation boxes. There's clothes hanging out of them. Sometimes there's people hanging out of them. And we've been trying to clean them up. We've spoken to some of the business owners about them. We did a lot of research into the boxes and come to find out, the boxes, the clothes, most of the time end up becoming rags. They send them off to factories, they make rags out of them, and they give the store or property owner a little cut out of that. So they're not even really fulfilling any type of need we have here, and they've become a nuisance. They usually end up collection spots for other items like couches and other materials that people dump next to them. So we're trying to clean those items up.
I'm really happy to see this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we got a couple of photos just to show you what we're talking about for those who may be in the audience, of some that were taken or some sent in by citizens who were... And while we certainly are empathetic with those who do benefit from donation boxes and centers, we do, I believe, have an obligation to make sure our city remains clean and safe. As you can see, a clothing donation box is now attracting box springs and sofas and, and there have been instances, as Chief Harris has said, there have been instances where now they're becoming makeshift homeless encampments where people are sleeping on the furniture that was donated out there. And so we've tried to deal with this for a period of years, and I think the best course of action is to just ban these receptacles altogether. Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made to approve this ordinance by Commissioner Knoxon, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That is, I just wanted to let us know that that is the first reading of that. And so we will have to go through three separate readings on that ordinance. Regular item 8C, "We will consider and take action on Ordinance Number 2025-13, amending the city's fiscal year 2024-25 budget to transfer funds from the general fund to the fire department's overtime pay line item." Chief Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Put together a quick briefing. EMS captain or administrators here, he has specific instructions to tap me on the shoulder if I go over an hour because a lot of information went into this. So we're going to...
An hour?
I trimmed it down. No, this will actually take only a couple of minutes. It's really quick. I won't bore y'all with too much EMS talk here. So I wanted to highlight our collections, which we've been collecting at a record pace. As you see, in 2023, over 2 million. 2024, 2.4 million, trending upward. We're probably on pace to blow both of those out of the water for this year. So just remember, that's revenue, a lot of collections, a lot of collections going on. Those collections are so high through the efforts of our EMS staff. They provide high-quality treatment and timely and effective patient reports. Like I said, with those reports, the timely and effective, timely and effective reports, we get aligned for those collections quickly and we're more successful. So short-term staffing challenges, this is kind of one of the reasons we're here. It, with the overtime request, takes about six to eight months to train firefighter to get to that certification, and another 16 to 18 months for paramedic. So you're almost at two years of training for a new staff member. Our primary staff member that we hire now is firefighter/paramedic. So on the ambulance, or as we refer to it as the box, there's two of those on there. And every time we hire one, that's almost two years of training that we have to put into them. And this is the question of the year. I have been asked this exact question many times. Why don't you just hire more fully-trained firefighter/paramedics that are already licensed? This is not a Texas City problem, not a Texas problem. This is a nationwide problem. There just aren't a lot of firefighter/paramedics that are fully-trained applicants. So I took a look at our last 26 applications, and only, I believe, two of them were paramedic applications. Only one was a fully-certified firefighter/paramedic. We began the hiring process for that one out of all those applications. So that's basically one in 13 applications that have a fully-trained individual that we can actually take in and put on the truck. In this particular situation, a fun fact, during the hiring process, that fully-trained firefighter/paramedic advised that they were going to take a job closer to where they live. So fully-trained, they basically can write their own ticket. They can go wherever they want. So we didn't even get the one out of the 26 applications. So our overtime trends, in 2024, we spent 757,000 in overtime. Now, keep in mind, we have people at work 24 hours a day. There's, we don't have any extra people at work. That is minimum staffing. In 2025, with the addition that we're requesting, that would put us at 772,000 in overtime. So that amendment is only about a 1.9% funding increase over 2024. And that's including a 3% pay raise that is factored in there. So by the numbers, we actually used less overtime than we did. And that's if the trend continues to what it is. These are projections, but we project to spend a little bit less. I mean, we project time-wise to have used less overtime, but with the 3% pay raise, that put us at 1.9%. People ask a lot about sick leave, and do people call in sick a lot? Does that create a lot of overtime? Well, we looked at those numbers, and from 2024, we actually had an 18% decrease in sick leave. So we use less sick leave. There was virtually no impact on our overtime because primarily that overtime is, we're training so many people getting certifications to be a firefighter/paramedic that while they're training, we have, we can't just have an ambulance with one person on it. So to meet minimum staffing, that's what you're seeing here. So the funding request for 258,000, it would basically ensure uninterrupted operations and emergency response while maintaining minimum staffing. That's all we're trying to do. Just another brief reminder, EMS collections have exceeded 4.5 million. That's pretty good, right? And the request is consistent with previous year overtime funding and supports sustaining essential services. So the request is identical to what we spent in overtime last year, basically. After this meeting has concluded, we do have a brief presentation for EMS outside. Everybody gets excited about seeing fire trucks with ladders and people climbing all over them. We would like you to take a quick look, Commission, citizens, at what we're going to present outside also.
Tell us a little bit about what we're going to see if we choose to stay for the presentation outside.
You're going to be wowed. You might as well take your shoes off because your shoes will be blown off. No, what we have outside is, as a striker rep, he's here, he's one of our vendors, he's going to go over some of the equipment we use and the challenges to treating a patient who is, has CPR in progress going on. So, and how many people it could take and does take to facilitate that. So, and he's going to be quick. He's just going to be really quick, probably quicker than me.
It is a great presentation for those of you who have an opportunity to stay and see that. I've already seen it, saw the abbreviated version, and so you don't want to miss it. Chief, I want to, first of all, thank you for this presentation. Is there another slide? Are you done with this?
No, he didn't want to stay up here for the hour, so that's it.
I want to thank you for the presentation. I did want to note that while that is a very good statistic on the 18% decrease in, what was that, sick time?
Sick time.
Yeah. We are also still in the middle of this fiscal year. So hopefully, no one calls in sick for the rest of this fiscal year, then you can hold on to that 18%.
It's going to go, it's going to go up to 22%.
Okay. So thank you very much for that. Commissioners, do you have any questions about this presentation or this agenda item? This request?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made to approve by Commissioner Knoxon this budget transfer for overtime pay, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So don't forget to hang out after the meeting for the demonstration. At this time, we are up to Commissioners' comments. We're going to start with you, Commissioner Clark, if you have any comments, and then we'll work our way down the dais.
Can you please pull the mic closer to you?
Microphone. Bring that mic up. There you go.
I can't really talk as it is. I have no comment. I mean, that's all I was going to say. Thank y'all all for all you do. We have a great team here. I'm just very excited to work with all of y'all. Thank y'all so much.
Absolutely.
No comment, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. I do want to, before I keep going, I want to acknowledge Leadership Mainland. Today, we were paid a visit by the 2025 cohort of Leadership Mainland, and I want to thank them, the Texas City Lamarck Chamber of Commerce, for stopping through. Y'all wave your hand and stand up for something or let us see who you are. They probably thank you. They had twice this amount of people earlier. I understand a couple of people had to step out, but we're thankful to you for what you do each year and learning about the different cities across the mainland and how we operate. Thank you so much. Commissioner Bowie?
I have no comments. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Knoxon?
Yes, sir. I would like to just give a shout out to the fire department and the police department, also our Director for Emergency Management, Mr. Joe T., Mayor also for the release we had last Saturday. I visited the EOC, and those guys showed great leadership and response to the situation. Lieutenant Shives in directing the police department on, you know, setting up barricades and roadblocks to secure a perimeter for the release. And just wanted to just shout you guys out and say thank you for all the work you did.
Thank you very much. I want to echo those sentiments. Emergency manager, Mr. Joe Tumbleson, just had it. Everybody who was in the EOC during that activation period was under great leadership, and he was just pretty much directing everybody as to how we were going to respond. We did have a brief shelter in place, and that was lifted once we got the all-clear from the refinery. Our sirens around the town were working. We didn't hear very many complaints, and the ones that we did, we were able to address. And so I want to just go ahead, as we enter into hurricane season, and kind of encourage... And so I want to just go ahead, as we enter into hurricane season, and, uh, kind of encourage those people who did not receive any one of the emergency alerts. If you live in the city of Texas City or have any type of assets or family in the city of Texas City, and you'd like to get those emergency alerts, to go to our website and sign up for our Everbridge system and our emergency alerts. I'm not gonna talk too much on that, 'cause Joe T. has a, uh, a, uh, event coming up on June twenty-fifth. We have our citywide emergency, uh, preparedness, our town hall meeting for hurricane and emergency preparedness. And so, uh, if anybody who lives in the Texas City, you definitely want to come to that. We had over five hundred people there last year, and we're looking for an even bigger crowd, uh, this year, as we, uh, enter into hurricane season. So, uh, thank you, Commissioner Knoxon, for that reminder. I'll just ask a, uh, blanket request for the entire city of Texas City staff. If any of you have any updates, staff or departmental, if you'd like to share them with us at this time, please come to the podium and speak to the microphone, and, uh, we'll get you on record. We did have a great and successful, uh, activity, again, of Juneteenth activities, and we have a wonderful, uh, Fourth of July celebration planned coming up with our, uh, usual fireworks display and everything on the dike. So, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, what the future holds of Texas City. Mr. Mike Richardson, what you got for us?
Uh, good evening, everyone, Mayor, uh, commissioners and staff and city, Texas City, uh, residents. I just got a couple of updates from Parks and Rec. Um, uh, June twenty-seventh, this Friday, it would actually be our, our first, uh, movie in the park. Uh, we will be, while hosting, uh, presenting the movie Wicked. So bring family out, come out and enjoy yourself. Um, we also will be hosting an adaptive sports day at Sanders Center, Saturday, June the twenty-eighth. This is a new program that we've been doing for our adaptive recreation for, uh, special needs, and it's been going really well. So this is something that we really be on, and we really want to push, and hopefully we can get people to come out. Um, last but not least, we have our Texas City Independence Day Parade, which will be July fourth, uh, ten AM, and that evening, we will have a concert at Bay Street Park, followed by a fireworks show. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
What time was the movie in the park?
Uh, the movie park is at, uh, six, I want to say six.
Okay.
All right. Any, anybody else in the city of Texas City have any announcements? I do want to remind everybody that tomorrow is Juneteenth, and all city offices will be closed, and we will resume our normal operations on, uh, June twentieth, on Friday, June twentieth. So, uh, if there are no other announcements. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.